Good morning. It's nine o'clock, so I'll call this special meeting to order. At this time, I'll have a prayer and then we'll follow it with a pledge allegiance. Lord be come to you this day, thanking you for the privilege of being able to be here to represent the people of this county. We ask you to be with us as we go about our business. And ask you to be with each councilperson. And each county employee. Lord be... Ask, pray that whatever we do will be pleasing in your sight. As always, we ask you to forgive us all the many sins, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen.
We move down to item three. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
There is.
Have a motion in a second, Mr. Conklin and Ms. Burns. Any discussion? If you've done all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Agenda has been adopted. We'll move down to item four. New business, Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Mr. Ruffner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of the meeting today, and I sent, I think the entire council, a copy of the relevant statute, but the purpose of the meeting today is for the county council to appoint its three members to the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Once those three members are appointed, and all of this is done strictly according to statute. This is not something that I have come up with, that county council has come up with. This is strictly by the statute. The county council appoints its three members based on population. The town of Sheraw would appoint one member, and then two other members would be appointed. You know, and they would have to be from, live within municipalities of the county. We'll appoint two other members to the commission to complete the six-member commission, which will formulate the ballot question. But our purpose this morning is for the county council to appoint its three members to this commission.
Do these three commissioners that we'll try to... Do they have to live in unincorporated areas?
They do not. They can live anywhere in the county.
Okay.
So, the one caveat, which I think I've discussed with a number of you, they can't be office holders, and of course, office holder in South Carolina is very broadly defined. So, just need to make sure that they're not on any other public board, commission, anything of that nature, because that would disqualify them if they take this position from that prior position that they hold. So, again, that is what the, that is the nature of the statute. And that's what we're left to deal with, so.
Can you explain what the actual duties of the commissioners would be and how often they would have to meet or...
I mean, the duties are to review and they formulate the ballot question that is then sent back to council for an up or down vote. So, they have a very important job. So, that would be their duties. As far as how often they meet, there's no specific requirements for that. That would really be dictated by the scope of the project. You know, how often they think they need to meet, that would really be up to the commission to determine that.
So, do we need to see if people have names?
Sure, yeah, and if, you know, and if council can come up with three that every, that at least five of you can agree on, I would hope it would be more than that, but but yes, you know, that would be the way we'd need to proceed this morning, is appointing those three commissioners. And then the next step in the process would be for the town council in Sheraw to appoint its commissioner.
Of course, and then we'd have to go back to them, make sure they're willing to serve.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. And if not, then of course, you have to, we'll be back here again doing the same thing, because the process can't go forward until that commission is in place.
This, this commission, their sole job is to develop the question for the ballot. So, they, this is only going to be a position through November.
Right, correct, yeah, I mean, really, really wouldn't be even be that, because if it's done this year, the ballot question's got to be the election commission in August. So, you know, it would be a fairly short duration. And you know, as I understand, at least county council's desire is that this would be essentially a one-project situation, that being the new detention center. So, that should make it easier than when this has been done in the past, or in some other counties, where you've got many multiple projects that are vetted, decided on or not, and then listed in a certain order on the ballot question. So, hopefully, with this just being as a proposed one-project situation, that would reduce the amount of time that this commission would have to spend formulating that ballot question.
Next question I have is if for some reason or other, we run into a snag or somewhere down the line where we cannot get this to the elects by August, what is our options after that?
The option and the statutory scheme specifically provides for, this can be done in an odd-numbered year. It still has to be done during the, during the general election time. So, can't have it on a, you know, Memorial Day or Saturday. I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be, I don't know about that, Mr. Curtis, but it's got to be done on an election day, and I was trying to look it up this morning. But I believe there is some language in the code that if there is no other election at that time, that there may be some enhanced notice requirements as far as public notice. But I would certainly encourage and think that whether it's done this year or next year, that public input, and of course, that's one of the purposes of the commission, they're a public body. But one of the purposes is to allow input from the public, give the public notice, which again, I think we would go above and beyond any of those requirements anyway. But to short answer to your question is, for some reason, it can't be done in time this year, or council decides it's not the right time, it could be done next year, it would just have to wait until next November, in other words, November twenty twenty-five.
Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ruffner, speaking of alternatives, look at the downside of this. If it all goes well, goes to the ballot, and is voted down, our options there are not good, are they? What, we're looking at bond indebtedness?
Yes.
ARP money?
Yes, I mean, we've got, you know, the, about five million dollars in ARP money. Looking around at, I think, our neighboring county Lancaster County, through a capital project sales tax. You know, one of their projects, I think it was their first project, was a detention center. I can't recall the exact figure. I think I passed that information along to council. Yeah, you know, it was ninety million dollars, not saying that we're...
How many?
Ninety.
You know, not saying that we're looking at that, but...
You told that at the meeting, the other night, the year's meeting.
But, just to give you an idea, you know, again, I'm not saying that we would need something that large, or...
They'd build a jail, they'd build a prison.
Yeah, so, but anyway, yeah, but the option would be, really, the only option would be similar to what council did with this building with the judicial center, would be the installment purchase revenue bond process, which if this sales tax doesn't pass, the way that's funded is through millage, through ad valorem taxes to pay the debt service.
Trying not to be pessimistic, but I'm looking for a range.
Sure, sure.
Now, DARPA money's got to be spent this year.
It had to be allocated this year.
Allocated.
Spent by next year.
Yeah, spent by the end of next year.
End of next year, okay.
Or is it twenty-six?
It's twenty-six.
Yeah, I'm sorry, spent by the end of twenty-six, yeah.
Twenty-six, okay.
It's got to be spent within two, basically, two years.
Two years, okay. Our bonded indebtedness ought to have come down with what we've been paying.
It has, and you know, that millage has reduced. If the interest rate situation was different, we might could look at doing a bond refunding, however...
That's what my next question, and we tag it on to, piggybacking on to that.
I don't think we would want to do that, because when that was done, interest rates were drastically lower than they were now. So, I don't think we would want to, you know, they call it refunding, but it, you know, in my mind, it's refinancing, same difference. I don't think we would want to do that, because that money is at a very low interest rate. So, this would be a separate issue, but under the Capital Project Sales Tax statute, funds, and this would probably be the way it would need to be done, funds from that Capital Project Sales Tax can be used to pay bonded indebtedness. So, and based on just some preliminary figures that we've looked at, both from the standpoint of the cost of a of a detention center and the bond to do that, and the funds that the Capital Project Sales Tax would raise, which, which, I can't remember if I mentioned this last meeting or not, can only stay on for eight years at a time. Can not stay on any longer than that without going back to the voters again and having it reapproved. It would generate enough to service that bonded indebtedness without having to do any millage increase. So, you know, my understanding and...
It ought to bring in the same amount of money every year that our regular lost tax brings in approximately.
Approximately, yes, yes, and it certainly can fluctuate, of course, depending on the economy. That's why South Carolina has what we refer to as the three-legged stool of property income and sales tax. You know, because some of those are going to, obviously, sales tax is subject to fluctuation, the other two, less so. But yes, but it's...
I'll leave you alone, we can move on, get this done. When is the school penny coming off? This coming year?
My understanding is it would end in twenty-five, and so my understanding is they are in the process now of getting that ballot measure on the, or that referendum measure on the ballot for this coming year, because it doesn't take effect until the following, I believe, May.
Thank you, correct.
So, that, so what they would be doing is they would be renewing or continuing, you know, what they have had for the last twenty-five years.
Let me ask you a question in that light. Now, say that the school board, their proposed one-cent tax, if it fails, when can they put it back on there?
That's a good question. I'm not sure, on this one, and I suspect it's the same way, that you could actually put it on the next year, you know? I think there's some policy considerations to that, is to, if you put it on one year and it failed, do you really want to put it on again the next year right after that? But I suspect theirs would maybe the same, but I don't know that for sure.
I guess the reason I bring that up is in light of the fact that they're going to put this on the ballot, do we want to put ours on there at the same time?
Again, that's a policy consideration for council. At this point, I will say, I would not let that affect what you're doing here. You know, I would go ahead with this process, get it started, get it going, you know, that's a decision that can be made later on by council.
Well, in light of that, I'll go ahead and throw out the first name. The name I have for the commission is Robbie Bennett. I know you know Robbie, Miss Hattie, you know Robbie, I assume Todd does, I don't know about Ben, I know Mary does. Ethan, do you know Robbie?
Is he still on town council?
No, he's not on town council. He's not on town council. Robbie Bennett's a friend of mine, I'll say that right up front, so we're not, but Robbie Bennett would study this thing from the beginning to the end. He'd know everything about it, whenever it's all said and done.
He's a good businessman, too.
He would be a good voice back to the community. He would be, I feel like he would be a good voice back to the community to articulate, you know, the needs.
I'd like to offer Dr. Samuel Richardson. He's the pastor.
I'd like to offer Dr. Samuel Richardson. He's the pastor of PD Union Baptist Church in Sheraw.
I'm just asking, is there a reason why, if this, does this committee need to be, you know, broad in terms of where folks come from? Or because they're just formulating the question, does that representation, how much weight does, do we need to place on that?
I mean, I think it's certainly a consideration, but that's really, I think, will be taken care of with the municipal ones.
Okay.
You'll of course have one from Sheraw, then the other two would be appointed by that commission. And you know, the idea is that they've got to be members of it, or residents of the municipality. My thought would be that those would broaden as far as geographically, the membership of the commission.
Okay.
So, I think that would be covered. Again, not saying that council may not want to consider, you know, trying to get a more diverse group of folks as far as where they're from in the county. But again, I think that aspect of the, of the commission is covered through the municipal part of it.
Okay.
Making sure that all areas of county are represented.
Okay.
I'll throw the name out there that I've been thinking about and considering. I'd like to offer up Jordan Sidhu, and like you said, he's a friend of mine. But I also see that he represents a large group of people on the western end of the county. And I think that him being a very business-oriented type person, and an in-depth thinker, that he would be a good representation for the west end of the county, and would, would put a lot of effort into this project.
Question. If I may. Do we need to add an alternate in there just in case some of these can't serve or won't serve?
I mean, I don't know that the statute provides for that.
It has to come back to the table again.
As a practical matter, I think that's a very good idea, but I would just be leery of kind of going outside what the statute says and naming beyond three. I may be off on that, but again, I want to be very careful. Again, this is a, this is a creation of statute, which means...
Not formally...
Right.
Not formally doing it, but because we've got three now.
Right.
But you sort of have one in mind, so.
I mean, I guess you could do that, you know, I would probably say if that happened, you would, you would need to come back again and vote to certainly add that, that other member, you know, to the commission.
What about the one from Sheraw? Does a Sheraw town council?
They would, they would appoint, yes, sir, and I'm sorry, I kept saying town of Sheraw, but yes, the town council would appoint that member. And I have had a conversation with the town manager there, he's aware of that. He had what I thought was a very good idea about a potential member. But I very quickly, you know, found that that particular member would, although I don't think any person would really consider him to be a office holder, under South Carolina law, he is an office holder, so he's not a, not a potential member. But he said he would try to give that some additional thought and take that to his council for consideration. But yes, their town council would vote to appoint that member.
Any other names?
I would like to throw a name out, just for the simple fact that I think from an optic standpoint, whether it's necessary or not, east, central, west, would be a better way for this county council to be represented. This gentleman lives just north of here, kind of just almost on the border of, I guess, Marion and I's districts. And his name is Barry Waddell. He's very engaged, I talk to him a lot. I think he'd have a lot to bring as far as representation of the community. Barry, Barry.
Barry.
Barry Waddell.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with you on all those comments.
B A R R Y W A D E L L, Waddell.
Now, we have four, correct? Now, we're going to have to pare that down before we vote on that.
Yes, sir, because you can't vote for more than three. Again, if you want to kind of say, we've got this other name out there, if these, one of these three can't serve, I think that's fine. Again, I would, in an abundance of caution, say, if that happened, you'd need to come back to vote to add that person as a member.
Well, let me ask you a question here. Do we have to vote on these this morning, or can we contact these folks and see if they're willing before we...
I mean, you can, I mean, it's just going to delay the process, and I mean, if it does, it does, that...
If they're not going to serve, we delayed the process.
Well, that's true, that's a good point.
Well, whether it's right or wrong, I've actually spoken with Jordan, just to ask him if the council chose to vote for him, would he be willing to serve, and he said he'd be glad to serve. So, I don't know if anybody else had talked to people that they put their name out there or not, but...
I've talked to Robbie, and just, just like I said before, Robbie's willing to do it, but he wants to know about what his scope of his work is before he puts his name out there.
And I've done the same thing with Dr. Richardson, so it's not like I'm throwing out a name that I haven't, you know, approached.
Right. I haven't spoken to Mr. Waddell in the last week or two, but we spoke several months ago, and he shared his willingness to serve in any capacity that he could be helpful. I'm sure if he's available and there's not a conflict that I don't know about, that he'd be willing to do it. But I'd be glad to call him if we need to take a five-minute break, just to make sure.
We're still going to have four.
But we'd know whether they'd commit to it or not.
If we're going, if we're going to vote, if we're going to, if we're going to vote on it, we really need to know if everybody's going to commit before we vote on it, because we're liable to vote off the person that would commit and not the other one.
Yeah, yeah.
See, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking, in finding out if people would be willing to serve before we vote.
And I mean, that's fine, I mean, I hate, I hate for you guys to come back for another meeting, but...
Yeah, I think that's, I don't know if we're in a situation where the timing is going to allow us a lot of time to have to come back for another meeting.
I mean, and the timing of course is, if you're trying to get it on the, this year's ballot, you know, we're really in a we've got a short window.
And is this something that we can discuss whether we want it on the ballot or not this time?
In this meeting? Sure, I think that would be within the scope of this. Y'all are not going to vote whether you want it on the ballot this time. That would be later, but I certainly think that's something you can discuss. Because that may, that may well affect your timing of appointing these commission members.
I'd just, I'd just worry about putting it on the ballot right now with the, with the other issue that's going to be on the ballot. I mean, in light of the fact that when we proposed the one-cent sales tax to widen the highway from Chesfield to Pazen, which I thought was a wonderful idea, that obviously, a lot of people didn't think was a wonderful idea. We don't have no better turnout than we did yesterday. Don't look likely either. But Mr. Ruffner, when would you suggest we meet again and get this clarified? Next Wednesday?
Yes, sir, I mean, as soon as possible. Yes, sir. I mean, again, that's presuming that it's going to go on this year's ballot. If it's going to be on next year's ballot, then you've got certainly much more time, but...
We'll have to take a five-minute recess, we'll try to get this wrapped up today.
Chairman.
Would you like to take a five-minute recess and let me reach out and just confirm what I already believe to be true? And see if we can do this today?
Yeah. I mean, if you want to do that.
That's, that's up to, up to council.
I would, I would rather, honestly, just, I would rather go ahead and get the ball rolling now instead of coming back to have another meeting just to vote on who it is, I mean, myself.
I'd agree. You've got four names, we can call these people, chat with them, make that decision today. Coming three weeks in a row to, up here, for me, I wouldn't be here next week, I'm just, I'm just telling you.
But I do agree that that is a concern about having two on the same ballot. But I also take the standpoint of we're not asking, we're not asking for a penny to supplement our millage for things that we're, you know, trying to do. We're asking for a penny for a specific purpose, and it's not a won't we would like to have, it's an absolute must. And this is, if we kick the can down the road another year with putting it on the ballot, we're going to be playing hard, hard times with this COVID money, this ARPA money in the timeframe that we've got to have that spent. I think if we wait till next year to put it on the ballot, then we're going to have to do bonds. We're going to have to do something now to be able to get that going.
I think it's up to us to make sure we educate people, too. The things that Heath sent out, the samples that other places have used, I think are very valuable.
I mean, if we...
And I, I agree with what you're saying, you need to get the ball rolling, but I'm just scared to death of putting it on there. Because most of the time, if somebody's going to go negative on one, they're going to go negative on the other. That's my concern.
And if, but if we put it off till next year, to put it on there, then what are, what are we going to do with the money? On the COVID money, we're not going to know the answer to that till November next year.
No, you can go and allocate, you can go and allocate the COVID money now.
You got to have it spent by twenty-six.
Yeah, well, if you still got plenty of time, if you don't put it on there till next year, November, you'll be good. Wouldn't you? I mean, unless I'm thinking something different than you're thinking.
But this project, five million dollars, will not last long. The first bill you get will probably cover that.
Oh, I, I agree with you, but you still not gonna get, but, but I mean, hey, I'm, I'm not, I'm just speaking, I just want to make sure that we have the best opportunity to get this passed, that's the only reason I'm bringing this up.
And I, I totally agree that that, that can be an issue. I think that's gonna fall back on us to educate, educate, educate to the public about,
There's a lot of it.
This is not something that we're trying to do to supplement, uh, our millage or anything like that. This is a project that we need to, we need to spread the burden, uh, to a broader group of people, because the property owners ain't the only ones going to jail, and the property owners ain't the only ones getting protected by criminals that need to be locked up.
Mr. Ruff, now, last, last time we did this, we were under certain guidelines as to what, how much we as a council could promote the referendum we had in force. Now, is this gonna, we gonna be on, are we gonna be under those same rules and regulations?
Yeah, I mean, the, and the, the, um, the, the basic tenet is you can inform and educate, you can't necessarily advocate. Uh, and, and certainly I think there's a fine line there, um, you know, I think the education part, you know, in, in this instance, again, with just one project, I think would be a bit easier than it was last time when it was a multitude of projects all over the county, different types of projects. Um, this one, I think, would be a bit easier in that respect, uh, and more focused, uh, than the, the prior, uh, attempt was.
We just, I guess reading up, so concerned is, we all, or I, I assume we all pretty much thought, us on the council, thought that the last one was gonna pass, and it got defeated so badly that that's the reason I have such a concern. Mr. Chairman, I'm reserved without moving forward now, and I know that's gonna give us a short window to educate the public, but if the school board, and I, I'm using literal terms, beats us to the punch, gets theirs on there and get it passed, and it passes, then what chance are we gonna have next time? And, and I agree, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just concerned, that's all. I am too. Uh, let's, let's do what Mr. Smallwood suggested, take that break and let him contact his fellow, and that way we can get at least that much of it done.
Okay.
Today. 'Cause I think we got a, a pretty good diversity with the names that we have, and, uh, I think I may know two of them. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know your candidate, but I feel sure he's very well qualified. I probably know if I see him.
I don't know.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a five-minute break.